That's right. I, I am old, man.
I'm trying to make the thing even more.
Mr. Chairman?
Seven thirty.
May I start? All right. I think everybody's present will call it meeting to order. We certainly have a form. It's your pleasure on the minutes of the December nineteen meeting.
Make motion approved.
So second, any more discussion? All in favor of motion, making no missing eye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Uh, next item of business is organizational meeting. Brady gonna take this over?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to implore, uh, to accept nominations for the position of chairman for this upcoming year.
I nominate Lawrence lawyer.
Nomination on four.
A second.
And we got a second. And then, Mr. Chairman, since you're still technically the chairman, would you put up the vote for us, please?
All in favor of the nomination, making no missing eye. It's like shooting in your foot, eh? Well, thank you. I just act as a facilitator. I have no more power than anyone else on this committee, so just remember that. All right, nominations open for vice chair.
I nominate Roy Easter.
Roy Easter's been nominated. Any other nominees?
Second.
Nate in second. All in favor of Roy for vice chair, making no missing eye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Congratulations, Roy.
Thank you for your trust.
Um. I think it's in, it's in the back here. I saw it somewhere, the committees, subcommittees.
Right after the minutes.
Yeah. If you're not. Don't like the ones you're on, just let me know and we'll swap some around. Or Brady, or let Brady know. Um. Uh. We will have a. Meeting of the CIP committee next Monday.
Yes, sir.
Where everyone's on there. Or if you want to come to others. Jump in. So we leave it at that. The bylaws, I don't know if he has them in here. We had them in Tackett last year.
Yeah.
I don't think it's anything really changed. The main concern was. Being present. Or certainly called in to, uh. State why. That way we'll know if we have a quorum or not. All right, moving on to old business. Update on the solar projects. I think I asked for this last time to want to know if they even working.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. You did ask. Uh, I spoke with Crystal Woodridge, uh, the environmental manager for the county. Um, she said that the Amelia One Solar Farm on Denito Road is complete and that they're working with, uh, the electric company on commission. She said it's quite possible that that has already occurred and that the site is active and generating power. Um, but she is, uh, not spoken with Southside Electric in just the last few days before I have gotten. She said the site is stabilized, um, and that all agreements on the SEP have been.
How about the second?
Second one is still under construction. She said panels are installed but not wired. Uh, the site, uh, she says still has a significant amount of work ahead in her estimation, at least six months of time. As they would need another growing season to establish better ground cover as part of their project.
And what about the one that, the big one just passed? Is it still floating?
No, no, we don't know.
Okay. Anyone else have questions on the soldiers? Moving on to new business, have a public hearing on the rezoning. From an R one to an R two. Do you want to read that, Brady, or?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. First, I'm going to read a summary, but also have just a visual aid here for the commissioners to. Mouse work. Awesome. Awesome.
It can move there.
See it?
There.
There it goes. All right, so the applicant, uh, Hunter Price LLC has requested, uh, rezoning. Of three point four eight six acres of land from the current. R one residential zoning classification to an R two residential zoning classification. The property is, uh, located on south side of US three sixty, approximately point one miles west of Virginia Street. Uh, which is state route, uh, one zero zero nine, formerly identified as tax map. Uh, thirty one dash nine dash one and tax map number thirty one dash nine dash two. On the Amelia County Real Property Identification Map, which has since been merged into one parcel. And will be referred to henceforth as tax map thirty one dash nine dash one. Uh, the comprehensive plan shows that this property is in the village development area. The rezoning that has been requested would be for the purpose of constructing three apartment buildings. That would feature twenty four total units. Eight units per building. Uh, the. Conceptual plan, which is included in the agenda packet, portrays a proposed access entrance located on Virginia Street. Near the southern property line. Um, it's about where the creek crosses right there. Uh, right after you pass the health and rehabilitation center, you're heading towards Dunn Street. It's the creek that is right at the edge of their property. On the Dunn Street side of that creek is where the entrance is proposed as is depicted in the conceptual site plan, which was included in the agenda fact. According to our public works director, there are golf, the sewer line is located in this area. Uh, which would mean the applicant would need to ensure compliance with VDOT standards in any areas where the road would cover the sewer line. Uh, a comprehensive site plan, of course, will need to be submitted by the applicant for staff review. Uh, to ensure compliance with all federal, state, and local codes, um, including but not limited to your zoning, your erosion, sediment, stormwater management. This time, we just have the conceptual site plan that you guys see. Uh, the applicant has offered the voluntary proffers of eighteen thousand dollars, six thousand dollars per building. So this would become a conditional rezoning, uh, with those voluntary proffers in that if the proffers were not fulfilled, uh, the zoning, uh, could be, uh. Considered not the re- the potential rezoning. Uh, this, there are, of course, multiple surrounding properties. There is, uh, multiple single family residential units. Um, to the door and to the east of the, of, uh, this parcel. And then to the south of the parcel is the Amelia Nursing, uh, Rehabilitation Center. On the other side of the creek to the west, there are also some single family units that are accessed via Jefferson Street. Due to the location, uh, of the property within the village development area. Uh, which has been identified in the comprehensive plan as the location to quote promote the development of higher density residential uses. Including a mix of single family and multifamily units that include both affordable and upper market options. With suggest- suggested density ranges. Of multifamily in this area of twelve plus units per acre. This does, uh, this. Proposed use is compatible with the future land use designation, uh, and plan of the comprehensive plan. That being said, I'd like to direct you sort of to your visual aid here. It's a little small, I'm sorry. But what you see here up in the top left, uh, is parcel one and two, which is now parcel one. If you're following my cursor, this is Virginia Street. So this is the two parcels that are in question here. This down here, parcel seventy three is the rehabilitation center as aforementioned. This is a, uh, satellite image of the same property that just shows you that it's at this time, as of twenty twenty two, which is the last. Uh, imagery that it is all wooden. This is a zoning, um, map. Now, the GIS map is actually incorrect on this parcel, which is the Health and Rehab Center. According to the official map, which is here, uh, it is B one seventy three is B one, not R one. But as you see, to the north of seventy three is. Where this subject property, uh, lies and it is currently zoned R one. In this, these two images, you'll also see the, some of the R two properties that the county currently has. Um, according to my research, there's six parcels that are zoned R two in the county. And they're all in this general area. Four of them have structures on it, so there's two vacant R two parcels in the county.
Where's your road? Entrance.
To the potential apartments?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we'll get there. Yes, sir. So this is your, your flood and your wetlands map. So this is your national FEMA map here. Here is the rehabilitation center right here. So up this way, uh, right in these woods here would be where the property is. And as you see, there's, there's no, uh, flood zone layer that, uh, FEMA has applied for this area, even though there's a creek there. Now, this is your wetland map. You see the creek that runs along, uh, here. This is about where that access would be. The apartments would lie somewhat in this vicinity here. Even though there is a creek there, there's not, uh, according to, uh. Our federal government, there's not a, uh, larger wetland area, uh, around this, this creek that would be affected. This is your conceptual site plan. And then, Mr. Chairman, there's your, your proposed, and this conceptual plan, your proposed access route. Uh, which is, of course, as I mentioned, just above this creek here, coming off Virgin- Virginia Street. Which indicates your, your three apartment buildings, um, right here on the, the former two parcels, which is now, of course, the one parcel.
There's only, uh, one entrance, gotta go in for those apartments on that top half, gotta go all the way through all of them to get there, right?
So, um. Technically, there's not more than one entrance required, no. Uh, but we'll get to some of the VDOT comments, which talks about if there was a second access, what would have to occur? For them to potentially be approved by VDOT or, uh, them being a public road. There is, um, historically an easement, of course, Dunn Street is a planted street that continues this way. Um. On record, the size of that easement is up for debate, and that was been, that was a little difficult for me to determine in the deep, the deep research that I had done.
But you do have easement on the road to bottom.
There's a, there's, um, and, and my understanding. There's not yet been a secured easement on the bottom, but that's where they would like to secure an easement, to propose access.
But that entrance is kind of in the bottom.
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir. Yep, as the way it's depicted in the conceptual sites. And then this is a, uh, conceptual site rendering, um. Of the buildings.
At ground that level?
No, there's definitely some slope to the ground back there. I've never walked on the property, of course, I've driven, drove a lot on Virginia Street trying to see, but I've not ever. Stepped foot on the property personally and walked back that area. So I cannot speak to the actual steepness of the grade. So lastly, just wanted to mention to you guys, of course, we sent this to VDOT with proposed concept site plan to get their thoughts. Uh, they did review the application. I gave each of you a, a, a copy of the letter that they had sent. They did state that the proposed access easement net the minimum distances that were required. Um, from the various other roads, Dunn Street, five forks, and even the access of the Health and Rehabilitation Center. Uh, but they offer some comments. One. That the current plan appears to have, to have a private road. And if the applicant desired that the roadway be publicly maintained by VDOT, it would have to have two access points, not one. So if it only has the one access, access point, has to maintain private, has to remain private and maintained. Um, in that, furthermore, that none of the roads shown, of course, will be eligible for state maintenance, with that being said. Um. Another thing that they mentioned is that even with that one access point, due to the proposed, uh, trick generation or the vehicles per day. That would potentially be entering and exiting the property. Uh, the property would be required by VDOT to have a commercial grade entrance. Uh, BDOT outlines that in their road design manual in the appendix F, gives you an overview of what is required for a commercial grade entrance. Um, that's above a low commercial grade and then below low, low commercial grade is, you know, your private entrances. Um, and then lastly, of course, just as we would require, we will require. A site plan is required to be submitted, and so they'll have to submit an actual final site plan that would go through VDOT's. For their, uh, approval process, just as it'll have to go through ours and through our erosion, sediment, and stormwater management and all the other factors. That being said, if you guys have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any question for Brady before I start answering?
Could you go back to the, um, aerial pictures with the flat lines?
Please?
Yeah. So it looks like this property with the proposed entrance has to cross. Two different parcels with an easement to get to Virginia Street. Think that's correct?
That looks how I read it, you're correct.
Mm-hmm. And that hasn't been done yet, right?
To my knowledge, no. The applicant, um, is in attendance tonight, and so if you guys, after having questions for me, if you guys want to. Ask questions to the applicant there here to speak as well.
Either way, top or bottom, it'd be two.
That's right.
You'd have to come through at least two.
Or if it was possible to use the Dunn Street plan in.
Yeah.
Dunn Street, that's exists.
Dunn Street goes on in there.
Long time, yeah.
You know, I guess he could. Any other questions?
On the application. It was a portion for proffers and there I didn't see it listed, but I did see it listed like later on.
Yeah, we looked at the statement of proffer section.
Yeah.
Um. Believe it's the fifth page is what would technically be their application package.
Okay, yeah, I just saw the inconsistency.
Provided six thousand dollars per million for a total of eighteen thousand. As a voluntary proffer.
You know, in apartments, are they? Is it apartment on first floor and apartment on second floor or the apartments two story?
I believe it's going to be apartments on the first floor and apartment on the second floor.
So, so you'd have some for handicap?
Um, when speaking with the applicant, something that they were very, um. Direct about was their desire to have handicap access, uh, apartments, handicap accessible apartments.
And I'm assuming the last set of apartments we had were not going to put a washing machine and dryer. Per apartment, they wanted to build it separate for all that. I assume this would be each apartment would have that access?
I never spoke about the washer and dryer, uh, directly on the alert.
And how many bedrooms are each apartment supposedly?
I think it's going to be a mix of bedrooms. Um, but again, the applicant is here, and so those questions, they would, they're more than able to answer.
Another stupid question I'll ask is what's the possible rent?
So, uh, we did discuss that, um, you know, informally as well, and there was a range of rent provided. Um, I think the range that was discussed in our conversations was anywhere from seven hundred to over a thousand, possibly, you know, eleven, twelve a day.
I'm just wondering if that road is not state maintained, who's going to maintain it? That's another concern.
Mm-hmm.
I think the state will ever take that road.
I'll, I'll open it up in a minute.
I'm sorry.
Not yet. You have plenty of time. Any more questions before opening up for a public hearing?
This is not for senior living or anything. It's a mix of anybody who wants to rent an apartment, right?
To my knowledge.
My concern is, is. I would prefer that he made some sort of improvements up the sidewalk up the side of, of Virginia Street. It's a narrow little street. People tend to drive out there pretty fast. And I know if you've got people in there, they're going to want to walk to town or whatever, or walk up through soccer field or, or something. And then these sort of. I think some sort of, you don't want people walking in the road up and down through there. Pop over that hill there, right in the middle of the road, you got a problem. I'd rather see something, some sort of improvements done where people can safely come down if they want to.
And, uh, you know, any of those negative impacts, that's, you know, according to the state code, that's the, the purpose, you know, the planning commission, making sure they list those negative impacts. And then it would be after listing those from the commission and the citizens. It would be up to the applicant whether or not they wanted to voluntarily proffer any conditions that may address any of those negative impacts. Which, of course, could be done in amending their application at any point prior to its final review, uh, the final reprocess.
And Hunter Price LLC like to speak before I open it for a public hearing to give us any more information?
Hi, how are you?
Fine, you can come forward. Just state your name, that's the main thing. We've got to have our name and address.
Shelby Rogerville. My address is nine eight three zero Knobsville Lane.
All right.
Um. So basically, I just want everybody to understand our vision here. It's, um, I know that there are a lot of concern about that. Everybody from Chesterfield is going to move here. That's not what we're after. That's not the, 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 uh, point of this. The point is to open up a little more affordable living. We have young people here that have nowhere to go. We have older people here that have nowhere to go. Twenty-five percent of these apartments will be accessible for anybody who may need it. That's not to say that somebody that, if there's one open, somebody else might rent it. The other thing is we do intend on having two bedroom as well as three bedroom. We are undetermined on the exact mix. Of those or of whether it'll be four, three bedrooms or, or whatnot, but we will definitely have twenty-five percent. We also intend to have a playground in the back for children that are ten and under, um, that hopefully keep them entertained. And out of the streets and out of the sidewalks. Is there any questions that you have for us?
Have any questions for her, Ms. Rogerville?
About the easements to the two, uh, properties between Virginia Street?
We have gotten verbal agreement with Mr. Hutchinson. He's the one on the front side. We have not gotten agreement with the second property at this point.
Would it hinge on that agreement?
I don't think so. I don't think it would hinge on that agreement. I think we, we would probably, if, if, if an easement was not granted. We would find a different way to do it, have the easement, um, to exit out at the top at Dunn Street.
Yeah, that, that, there's, there's an old street right away out there, or Dunn Street.
Yes, sir, yes.
I couldn't decide not to use that. Like if you use your build up on the hill, then down to that bottom.
That's true, but we thought it was a little, actually a little more visibility down at the bottom, and then it was already a nice little road bed there that we could put a nice paved access through right there.
Okay. Will there be some kind of walking path up Virginia Street, stay off the road, get to the sidewalks at Dunn Street?
We have not planned on that to this point, however, the access road from the apartments out to Virginia Street. We do intend on having sidewalks there as well as a nice lighting package along that for anyone to walk. To, to Virginia Street as well as a nice lighting package inside of the apartment complex.
Would you, would you repeat that?
We have a nice lighting package that goes from the apartments to down the, the, the entrance as well as sidewalks down there too.
From the apartments to Virginia Street, yeah.
Now, the sidewalks, I, I guess we have to do a little more investigating on that because that's going to cut into those properties, um, those other residences that are right there.
Should, it should be enough right away in there to put it on the state's right away.
Even better.
But, but if you were to use the entrance on top of the hill, like Dunn Street going extended.
Yes.
Then they've already got sidewalks coming up from town up to that corner right there.
You're correct.
You don't have to build a sidewalk out to Virginia Street and you wouldn't have to through Virginia Street at all.
That's a good option. Yeah, Ken, Ken. This is Ken. He's the vice president of Chris Price LLC.
Ed Rogerville, same address as, as Shelby. Uh. The reason that we prefer to go in at, at the bottom along the utility easement is because of the, of topography of the lots. And we're going to spend a whole lot more money moving dirt, coming in from the top and building from that than we would come in from the bottom. And, uh. It's, it's just the way, the way it's laid out, it's, it's of, uh, much more economical to come in from that.
Would be more economical if you had to put sidewalks outside of Virginia Street.
I could put sidewalks in on Virginia Street a whole lot cheaper than I could move seventy-five thousand, keeping yards of dirt.
Okay.
And this, yeah, and, and that's, that's what we'd be, we'd be looking at is cutting fill when a tremendous amount of fill. Coming in from the bottom, I'm just doing a lot of cut, not, not a lot of fill. We'll probably end up having retaining wall on the backside. Uh, because it is so steep at the bottom, it's a very gentle slope. The farther you get up towards, uh, Dunn Street. The, you know, it gets really steep. And that's, that's why we, you know, feel like it's, it's better to come in. Off Virginia Street down there at the utility easement.
Okay. Anyone else have a question for them before we open the public hearing?
Wouldn't it be a little safer to come in on top of the hill? Going that way and dropping in that bottom, there's no stop sign for that traffic that way.
Well, right, but there's a stop sign at, at the top, you know, but there's a pretty clear view coming both directions. There's not a lot of, you know, vegetation along the side of the roads.
So I, I think it's, it's, you know, visibility wise, don't see that as being an issue.
Anyone else have questions before we open it up?
I know you don't know, uh, what the mix will be between two and three bedroom, but. Do you have an idea to what? Uh, what the, uh. Average, um, number of occupants would be?
Well. At this point, we were thinking, and, and this was a conversation we had about this yesterday. We were thinking about three bedroom. Having, um, three to four, three bedrooms homes. All of the handicap, uh, handicap accessible or ADA accessible, um, we were anticipating those being one single bedroom. And probably the rest being two bedroom. Um, as far as the average, I would say the average would be honestly two people per, per unit.
So approximately twenty-four per building?
Yes.
Yes.
And what's proffered is then two hundred and fifty dollars per. Uh. Per tenant.
Correct.
Any more questions? I'm sure we'll have some happen.
Handicap accessible or only have just one bedroom?
We, well, we, we've talked about that too between one and two.
One and two. You consider maybe having like a walking path? To the old. You consider maybe having like a walking path to the old road bed or easier walking up to Dunn Street?
Yes, we, we have talked about using that road or sort of a maintenance road or service road. So we're not blocking that road off. That road will be accessible, paved. Yes, I mean, put sidewalk or something, that could be a possibility.
Glad you think about a playground. Or a place to walk.
Any other?
All right, thank you for your comments. We'll see what roars up. Any more questions for, for public hearing? Hearing none, now for public hearing. On the request to go from an R, um, go back right straight. R one to an R two. Come forward, state your name, an address. And try not to repeat what someone else just said, so that everybody has a chance to talk. That's all I ask. Go ahead.
I have a park, I'll probably be that's twenty feet to the north, but it's supposed to be an extended. Dunn Street was supposed to be extended through there. It's never been extended there. Like I mentioned in Dunn Street and moving the entrance up the hill. In about two thousand fifteen, Mason Bowman subdivided it. At that point, it'd always been one family, one dwelling. He wanted to use the lane and his extension in the street. V-Dot denied him that and made him put the easement on the other side of those cedar trees. And that easement, you've got the easement, you've also got a utility easement. So I have some question about how they can move and come up to the northern end of that property and make them. Entrance or.
As V-Dot at that point in time, I don't know what V-Dot would say now. It would have to go to them, just like we got a letter for the, for the road at the bottom. They'd have to, uh.
He, he had to put the, the entrance into the property where it is now. The main concern is, I think, create safety hazard for the traffic, which is repeating what he's already said. But also, I oppose designing the law on being considered because of the proliferation of apartments and pavement in the village. But there's very few open land or trees left around here. I've identified at least two websites that are already apartments in the village. And some of the locations on Autobahn, in Alford Street, Ford Street, to Washington Street, Patrick Henry, and overall to Main Street. There at least these ten, and there are also two converted houses where you can buy rooms. And ones on Washington Street and those right across the railroad track on Main. And in the village itself, you've got apartments upstairs over Washington, Washington Street and over Ford Street directly next to the White House Square. And all these apartments in existing places now are, are street paved streets, which facilitates the access if an emergency vehicle had to be called. Or if the police had to come for some reason. This is going to be at one tenth of an acre off the pavement street. And the entrance that is what is proposed now, they would come in at the bottom. Over this sewer easement. Make a right turn, come in uphill to get to the apartments. And the site itself got door steep slopes on the west side and also on the south side. So I don't think that it's suitable to put three fifty, five hundred, ten to fifty, five hundred, fifty quarter feet. Buildings on that, we have to work. If you pay one more place over like that, it's going to create more erosion in the little drainage ditch that the county is going to do there now. As I mentioned, part of the pavement. Got these areas now, the schools, the Baptist church, the library. Save more. I have the buildings that are about paved now over now. They'd already mentioned the traffic going into Virginia Street. If you've got people living in the apartments, they've got to walk in, they've been going in and out in the morning and evening. And if you've got some people down there in twenty-four hours, if you stay an average of two to a bar, you're going to have fifteen to twenty cars going in and out from Virginia Street every day. It's already a piece of. And questions I have, I think you've answered a lot of them, like for rent, seven hundred to eleven hundred dollars. Somebody like in my situation, I couldn't afford to build it there. That's the way that's about all. I just hope you will take them to consideration. And it was nice for the villages, the village, and we should try and maintain some part of it as it is. That's why my three acres is not going to be stuff.
Thank you. Next. Who would like to speak next?
Members, I'm Martha Pullen, and I live on Jefferson Street. Sixteen sixteen, sixteen six twenty hundred feet to be specific. While the owner's vision is laudable, this is not the place to put these apartments. They knew it was zone residential one when they bought the property. And so they want to come in and change it because they want to make money off it, and I understand that. But it changes the character of everything around it. My house will look on the back end of those apartments, which I am not at all thrilled about. That's not the only reason I oppose it. For one thing, the owners have already spoken to one of the reasons I oppose it, and that is the very steep nature of the land. And if you haven't walked it, you don't know it. It's very steep. It would be hard to put two houses on it, much less three large apartment buildings. That's going to take extensive, which they've already said, they've already admitted, it's going to take extensive grading, landscaping in order to build there. I'm concerned about what's going to happen with that creek. Because it's already experiencing erosion because there's so much pavement that's happened in the village. And there was also an incident of raw sewage in the creek back in the summer. I think that's been abated that they're checking in every month. So there's problems with that creek. Don't care what FEMA says, there are issues with erosion and now, and with the extensive excavation and grading that these apartment buildings are going to need. It's going to create even more problems with the creek. It's just the wrong, I don't, I laud their vision, but it's the wrong place to put this size of a complex. Yes, there are other apartment buildings around, but there is also a lot of R one residential, which this is zone now. And if it's changed, it's going, if it's changed to R two, it's going to change the whole character of the area. This is a, a large facility that's being planned. It's not small, like some of the other apartment complexes that are around. Yes, there are other ones, but they're very small. So these are the reasons I oppose it. And I hope you'll take that into consideration when you make your decision.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to speak?
My name is Jeff Squires. I live on Little Patrick Road, thirteen six fifty. I guess listening to the proposal and stuff, I came in here with it, when I read about it and stuff, I kind of thought some issues that it might come up with and was more opposed to it prior to coming in. But looking at it and seeing how the planning commission had looked at that area in the past to develop it. By understanding what you guys, what you were saying earlier, that the change into R two was a big issue, as in for the county has been looking to do something like that in the past. Seeing, they had mentioned about sidewalks and stuff. I see high schoolers, because my kid goes to media academy, and so I have to pick them up and come them back around and stuff. There's fifteen to twenty high schoolers walking in the middle of the road every day. So sidewalks are, have been needed way before this has ever been addressed. So if that's something the county wants to do, I would be behind. But to make one property owner on the whole street pay for it, I don't think is realistic. It, you know, it needs to be done, but not by. Now with all the water runoff and stuff like that, that'll be addressed, I guess, at a future date. I guess I do have a question of when, once this goes through, how, how soon before they break ground are they looking at? Does anybody know?
I don't know. I assume if it goes through, they break ground as soon as they could.
Well, I know the process.
But I mean, it, it would take a while for soil erosion.
Right, right.
Plan to be written, the county to accept.
They don't have an actual design yet.
Yeah, you got to have a design. I mean, it'd probably be at least a year, a year and a half.
The rootless don't have to be, that'll all be controlled by Department of Land Quality.
Yeah.
And the source issue, that should have been handled by the county anyway. I'm surprised to hear you have some raw sewage running in the creek, but. That's all I, that I'm not against it in that sense, because that's what we are planning for in the future. I would be against it in other localities.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Lois Boyd, and I lived at Giles Apartments on Virginia Street. I was thinking about water, sewage, even though the county controls it, it's going to be a lot of extra. And there's a lot of cars that are going to be on the road. And like some gentleman mentioned, we have children all day during the school year that walk that road. And I found difficulty with just the two lanes trying to keep from hitting them. One on this side, oh, we want to run over here. Oh, let's run over here. Let's run down the street. Bicycles, all the people with the dogs, it's just way too much traffic that you're planning on putting on Virginia Street. And I oppose with that reason.
Thank you, ma'am.
Garden Conkle, one six two eleven Church Street, corner here in the village. So a few points I want to bring up. One, you stated earlier, Brady, R two in the village already. There are two vacant R two lots. Now, obviously, for the people here, it's more costly or a better cost option, I should say, for them to have you all do the government process and rezone on this lane. I think rezoning is a sacred thing, though. What does the community, especially my immediate neighbors, get out of this process? Never mind their pocketbooks. Everybody has a right to make a buck. I get it. What do the people who have already invested in this area get out of this process of rezoning? The land that's already R two has room for plenty of apartments. If we need apartments, let's put them on the R two. Let's already utilize the land that we already have zoned for apartments. And then once that fills up and there's still demand, maybe we should look at rezoning some of the other plots. We're putting the cart before the horse and we're jumping the gun. We're looking at the here and now and not really looking in the future. We go forward with the rezoning. Another point I want to bring up, last week at the board of supervisor meetings, Mr. Felch, you were there. Talked about the water quality, the watershed, which this is in direct, being in the village area. This does have direct flow to all our water access here in the village. This is right on there. The amount of land that's going to be needing to be moved to level this out, what's that going to do to our opelifiers, to our well system, for the rest of the residents here? Yes, the well system will support the twenty-four apartments. But how is this going to change? How is this going to affect the water table? How's it going to affect the water quality, the runoff to the rest of the residents already here that rely on that water? I can tell you right now, it might be my pipes. I'll put water in my hot tub, it comes out orange. It's already a little iffy. I don't know, maybe it's my pipe. What disturbing, what kind of disturbance of this plot of land right here in the middle of that watershed, how's that going to affect that? What kind of studies have been done? What have we checked into that? Second, people are afraid of, this is going to be a controversial thing, but I'll go ahead and say it if nobody else will. People are afraid of people from Chesterfield moving out of here, right? Those apartments, those designs, what's proposed and those price points are not going to be people from Chesterfield. It's going to be people who can't afford to live in Chesterfield. You go back to my hometown Newport News and you look at apartments built like that. You can go right around the corner here to the Wingo Building. I'm sure there's some good people that live there. What's an eyesore coming into town? That's this on a larger scale. Apartments built like this, this kind of design, these kind of structures do not hold up ten, fifteen, twenty years from now. Go back to my hometown Newport News, drive around, look at them. They're, they're, they're all over the place and they're blight. They're staying on the community. Is that what we want to prove? Something that's going to be like that down the road? These are not, we can do better in the village. You're looking at putting these, I'm sorry, the product went down into slums in the backyard of the residence in Jefferson Streets, which are some of the nicer homes, some of the nicest homes on the village. That street, going down Jefferson Street, are some of the nicest homes in this community. We're going to dump these apartments in their backyard. How is that fair to my, my fellow community members, my neighbors? Is that what we want to do? Is that what the legacy of this board wants to be? That, putting that right in the middle of our community. Let's utilize the R two. If you want to put apartments, go buy the R two that's already here instead of trying to change this R one, buy the R two. Put apartments there. When that fills up, then we can talk about, maybe we need to rezone some land and we need to build some new apartments. We need to do more studies as far as this water table goes, how moving all this dirt will affect that. And most of all, we really need to think about the people who have come here, who've already invested, who already live here. And how does this benefit the community members, the direct neighbors the most? Is it worth going to the rezoning process? I think should be something taken very seriously as something almost sacred governmental process. Thank you.
I have a question. Were you, did the other R two properties has already been rezoned for sale?
No, they're not for sale, but everything has a price.
Do you know where the only R two property that's open is currently?
By the school. There's a very large land that could be well over a hundred apartments put there. So let's put some apartments here, there, and then next thing you know, they finally put the hundred apartments there. Now, do we have enough? The school's already proposed forty-seven million dollars for a CIP fund that's in front of us. They don't have much more room in the schools. Who's going to pay for that? What about, once they build those a hundred some apartments on that R two that's already existing, can our water system support that? That's things to think about long term.
Next.
My name is Jennifer Martin. I live at five eight oh one Cedar Lane. Wasn't sure if I was going to speak, but I have a history of working for apartments. They're not slums. There are lots of things in place now, building codes to make sure that buildings are livable, habitable, and that they're good for the people that live there. But not only that, there are so many families that are planted here, mine included. I've lived here my entire life. My kids, they have nowhere to live if they turn teenagers and turn into young adults. There's no housing available unless, you want to talk about rundown? Tr trailers. They have shelf life of like twenty years. So I really feel like apartments, especially twenty-four, that's not a bad number. It's providing for the kids that are growing up and graduating, so they have somewhere to go. I don't think for families, single moms, you know, elder adults that need somewhere to go. We own some, some apartments here in Amalia, and we get calls all the time for places to live because we don't have enough. There's not enough, the land is so expensive for somebody to just buy land and build a house or put a trailer. Apartments help with that for the first time, families, for the starting over families, for the elderly that, that can't get into, you know, the nursing. you know, the nursing home, but they can't take care of a home by themselves. This will help all of our citizens. It has nothing to do with people coming in from outside. It has to do with taking care of the people that need to be home here and live here and for our children. I have a son graduating this year. He's going to college and he's coming back. You know, where do I put him unless he has money to buy land? Who has that right out of college or right out of high school, working at, working at, you know, a trade job? They don't have it. We need more housing in Amelia. We need affordable housing in Amelia. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Afternoon, fellas. My name is Ira Omar and Griffin Jr. I'm a sixteen-year-old resident at 1461 Mead Road over in District Two. I'd just like to voice my support for this general apartment complex. Having been aboard Teenager one night, just kind of going over, kind of reading through the Mid-County website, I stumbled upon what I believe was the 2015 master plan, if that year was correct. And I have seen that there were three proposed development areas, kind of like a small area in Jula, another small area across from the old 360 at Jewesville, and one in town. And when it comes to development, I do believe that we have to make sacrifices, unfortunately, to those who do live on Jefferson Street, who are probably going to get their sweet view taken away from them. But what the village is for is for development. And I do understand the sewage issues that others, including Mr. Conkle, has brought up. That does concern me for residents who drink tap water. But piggybacking off Ms., I forgot her name, I'm very sorry, who mentioned that she has a son who wants to come back here. I believe that we should use the land that we're trying to rezone now for these apartments because the chances of these other R2 places coming back are probably very slim. And what Mr. Conkle said about the a hundred, say, if there were a hundred places to be, a hundred apartments to be zoned across the high school, who's really going to be coming for that right now? When I saw that they were developing eighty units at Amelia Avenue, I thought that was just too big of a number for this town. But twenty-four at this smaller area with probably less drainage issues would be a better spot to give possibly twenty-four entire families a good spot to live in. That's affordable, not a single-family home, as something that is in town. Just can walk to the infield field to play soccer, go to the gym, or play at the rec like me, which I do all the time, and shoot basketball. Instead of just not being able to live in Amelia County and enjoy the small-town charm. Because small towns do have apartment complexes, like I see in Blackstone. I believe Miss Costa mentioned on Facebook that you can still have a small-town feel despite having apartment complexes in there. And I'm in general support because I'm a big proponent of dense development within the village because the village is suited for that. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak? Want to give everybody an opportunity.
Hi, I'm Russ Moore. I live down in Mamborough at 9720 Coleman Drive, lower Amelia. Some of you might know, my wife is a school teacher here in public school. And she told me when I was on my way here to bring up the fact that when they hire new teachers, they come here and there's no place for them to live while they're getting started out in the community. And that they don't want to commit to buying a house because they don't know if they're going to stay or not until they've got their feet in the water and been here a year or two. So when they do figure it out, then they can go ahead and commit to the big price of a house. Excuse me. But in the meantime, anywhere from $700 to $1,100 a month is pretty affordable housing. And it's really, really needed out here. And then we also have veterans that are returning home. The kids that graduate and don't go to college, a lot of times they go into military. Well, they don't make that much in there, so they don't have the down payment for a house when they get out. So therefore, they need affordable housing. So there's another group there. And then there's retiring seniors that don't want to maintain a home anymore. They want somebody else to take care of it. Well, they can live there and have an apartment they can live in, and alls they have to do is worry about that rent payment every month. So they don't have to worry about maintaining the old home place anymore. So there's another group. And environmentally, if you can locate twenty-four families on three and a half acres and hook them up to the public sewer system, seems to me it's a lot more environmentally sound than getting seventy-five acres and breaking it up into three-acre lots and hook it up to twenty-four different septic systems in the ground. So I'm just looking at it from that aspect. So I think it's a good, good solution here for a lot of regions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? I don't want to cut it short. Anyone else like to speak? Any more comments? Any more comments? Seeing that I'll close the public hearing. Go back to the planning commission. Did anyone on the planning commission have any comments, questions?
Got one question.
Go ahead.
To address Mr. Clankles' issue, I'm not sure if that is in the wellhead study that we just did. I would like to get a clarification on that. Because we, it's got to be some changes within that that study, of where, how big the land is. I would like to have a answer to that. I don't know. I haven't looked at the map back close to see if that's in the
All wells are currently used or down there by the golf.
I think so.
I know they are.
So I'd just like to get clarification on that. I mean, I know you, I trust you, but I don't, I don't know how big the radius was around.
I don't think we have any wells out on this side. Might be one, I don't know if they were putting new stuff at a good drill one over there of hide and top Scott Park. And it's turned out it was a wrong property, so I don't know if they ever start using now.
Okay.
None of this area right in here.
More questions or comment? I think we have a lot of uncertainty on part of it as to what's actually coming in as compared to the last set of apartments that we discussed on the committee. And, you know, we had a lot of different comments from the public. And the public will, no matter what we decide, the public will have another comment session for the board supervisors whenever they take that up. So those that spoke, this is not your only avenue you still can go before the board supervisors. They have the final say. We just make a recommendation one way or the other. Any more comments or questions or?
I didn't quite, I wasn't quite clear on. I think the lady that was up there said something about the Dunn Street Extended or Dunn Street Trade Down There. Didn't they say they were going to have pedestrian connectivity up to the end of Dunn Street, up that road or something? They say that or I misunderstand that?
Excited to do that. They were going to have some kind of road bed or maintenance or that.
Like not for the, not for the people that live there, but like, yeah, she said like maintenance access. People could walk to get.
Yeah, they said they could put another, even just a private road in there along that northern line. That was, that was a place for sidewalk. I mean, people walked through there, wouldn't have to work back and run over.
Oh, yeah. I think that's what she was saying, just not sidewalks along actual Virginia, because I don't think they could even do that. I don't think that would be even possible. We can't even get sidewalks on those byhorses, saying.
Well, most of the sidewalks that have been put in have been in government grants.
Yeah.
And it takes a while to get monies for them. And it takes VDOT even longer to get them in, to have enough time. Any other comments anyone else made from the public that question? Or need to think about? I mean, it's not something we want to rush into, but certainly the county needs places for teachers, places for young people. You know, we've heard that comment for years that I have children. I don't have any spouse at home to keep them, you know. They need to be out on their own, you know, and
And my concern is
Truthfully don't need a trailer park.
No, and I have heard the comment about why are we using R1 when we already have R2? But when I pulled up the tax map, because I didn't realize Brady, I should have known he would have it. But, you know, really, the only big R2 section left is literally the section across from the middle school next to the school board. If I, if I was a teacher, that's the last place I would. But even if apartments, even if I got apartments got built there, I think that would be a mess personally. We already have so much traffic on that road, I can't even imagine trying to live there during the school year. But that's another issue because you know that access would be coming off of Otterburn. But that's really the only parcel left that's R2. And I don't think it's even in play right now as far as being developed. There's one other small one down there, but all the other R2 parcels already have apartments on them. There's just, do what?
And they're full.
They're full.
Yeah.
And I mean, literally, I did see a lot of comments and support on social media. Not, not specifically for this parcelness, but just in support in general. But I do agree that compared to the last one that you guys had to deal with, which I wasn't on the board then, so I didn't get to hear a lot of the, you know, every, like, all the discussion and everything. But my issue with that one was the number, the location, just the, a lot going in at one time. I do think this is a much more scaled back and reasonable. You know, as far as having the two and three bedrooms. I was in the position once when I needed a place to live, and it was very difficult. I mean, word of mouth, trying to find a place to live, didn't want to, I know so many people that have had to take their kids out of the county and go to Chesterfield that wanted to stay in Amelia and couldn't. Because there's just nowhere to go when you are in a situation where you have to move out on your own. And I have friends in that situation right now who's, you know, are having to drive their kids back and forth to Chesterfield every day from school because they can't find anywhere to live here. So I just think we need to, at some point, realize that it's something as a county we're going to have to do. And the village, to me, is the place to do it. I mean, people aren't going to, you know, we are R1, R2, B1, B2. That's several apartments in town are B1. I did look that up. The ones up on Church Street, they're all B1. And I don't know the difference there or why they're B1, but maybe they started out something else.
Probably our grandfather did build a apartment.
Yeah. The ones up by the post office, those are B1, the ones that the Morris's run. So those, those are the only ones I noticed that weren't R2. But anyway, that's just some of my thoughts on the issue there.
Well, the other part too is any apartment you put in, you're going to have to have sewer. You can't put it in a septic system. So it goes back to where's the sewer system in the county? Where's the sewer system maintained in the county? And if you, in the long run, you know, if you want businesses, you have to have water and sewer for the people to work in. And I know they, they've been, county's been looking for many years of possibly putting up another water tower or trying to find some more water sources. And most of those have been, I don't know, 360, toward 360, but we don't have a lot of sewer systems out there.
And that's one of the main sewer systems goes down through that courthouse branch. It's one of the main, main trunk lines.
Yeah, probably one of the first ones put in. Any more comments, questions?
Well, I think it's, you know, there's no question that there's, there's a need and there is appropriateness and, you know, in being located within the village for water and sewer and proximity to these foods. Which makes it less expensive to transport kids. Also good for for young teachers in particular. But I think the speakers here have made some raised some, some very reasonable concerns. This this much excavation on this size acres is is, it's, it's bound to to, to affect the drainage. And the main thing is that the creek has benefited from the fact that this land with this much elevation is woodland which absorbs and helps as far as runoff is concerned. So the runoff, when you add the roofs and the asphalt would be much greater. I know that you know, the state agency is one of the really the primarily seen about this, but I have a problem with moving forward tonight because the the actual right-of-way is not secured. And I would I would recommend that we, we consider postponing this at least a thirty days.
Well, sixty is the most we can propose.
Yeah, well, we can do thirty or sixty, but I guess the question I have is, is the right-of-way, they anticipate that the right-of-way issues would be resolved within thirty days.
Well, we've already had agreement on one.
How, what is that, fifty feet?
Yes, sir.
Fifty-foot right-of-way?
Yes, sir. Let's go back.
You heard the comments. I mean, we've got a need. But it is some questions like I stated when we closed the public hearing that, you know, things we have to think about. But, you know, on a solar farm, you totally had to put water trees and everything else. Can you do it here? But, but you know, when you go to E and S and all that, I'm sure with the solar farms, I've dealt with them in my area. All of them had to have sediment ponds to start with. So if they put them sediment ponds in like they supposed to, you shouldn't get any water in that creek other than some runoff. In the same way of, you know, asphalt, you know, farmers always get blamed for polluting everything. But asphalt, it's not real permeable. But if it's designed right and then water's control coming off the asphalt, it's not, not that detrimental. I mean, just like any land. You drive down a road too long, you get a hard rain, it's going to cut a ditch. I mean, it's just, that's how land is. But if you farm it long enough. So I mean, it's some other stipulations you possibly could add to this, not so much proffers, but you know, to help on the Jefferson side. But, you know, anytime somebody wants to cut trees, people start raising cane. But you know, if you your trees are your profit growing on your land, you got to cut them or else you're going to go broke. So I mean, it's, it's a time and place that trees are going to come down and be reseeded one way or the other. Whether it's crop land or going to be reseeded. So I mean, there are things to think about too, but I mean, that's just some suggestions off the top of my head that, you know, with
At R1, somebody could come in there and clear the trees.
Oh, yeah. Anytime you're going to build a house, you're going to clear trees and you're going to move dirt to, to make the lot where you want to set your Anytime you build a house, you're going to clear trees and you're going to move dirt to, to make the lot where you want to set your, set your house. Anyway, it is now, the land is pretty much landlocked, so you couldn't build any houses in there anyway. Where you go to half acre and count and, what's the smallest lot size in the village?
It's dependent on water sewer availability, but with water sewer availability, I think it's fifteen thousand square foot.
It's like quarter acre.
Quarter acre. So you talking about what, twelve houses in there? If you graded it right.
I can tell you right now, my, my experience in, in over the years, they don't, DEQ, they're not going to let one drop water going in that creek to stop and filter and restrain, I can guarantee you that.
I mean, that's one thing that's, they're going to have to deal with is whatever DEQ says.
Right.
And I know, uh, I just had them at my place two weeks ago and they burned a hole in me, but, you know, it's just, you know, they're, they're pretty strict.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, even in agriculture, a lot of people don't think so, but you saw the paperwork and stuff you had to deal with. It's not a, a free meal out there. But what's your pleasure? One is suggested table it for thirty days, wasn't in a motion, but suggested. Should we find thirty days and see if they can pretty much get the second person, certainly for, I don't know about written thing, but if they think they can get the right of way in there. I'm sure they didn't want to say much until they decided if they could even develop it to start with.
I'll say this, this addresses almost every concern that we had with the last apartment complex. Um, and I've got three young adult children and none of them live in the county. And partially because they couldn't find a place to live. Um, but I do have a concern with the right of way. I mean, to me, you address that, that, that's, that's my biggest concern.
I've got a question for Senator, maybe you can, you spoke of some sediment ponds when we were dealing with the solar. You got any opinion on sediment ponds would do to, that, that would certainly take care of the erosion.
They put two on here, but I'm guessing that was just, I don't know if they, um.
Now, were they actually going up?
Yeah, I don't know if that would be, um, the E and S is not my, I, I work for a company that does that, but that's not me, I'm not an engineer. Um, but, yeah, I was going to say.
This plan is, is a conceptual layout.
Correct.
And, and correct, and they, and they do show the sediment ponds on there. Uh, and, and as you were discussing earlier, what's going to happen if, if this moves forward and it's based civil engineer to actually do the design? Uh, there may or may not be sediment ponds. It depends on, on what DEQ is going to accept as water quality, water quality structure. It could be a pond, uh, I don't like ponds and residential areas, but that's not my, you know, I, I don't get to make that decision.
You can make it now.
Likely it could be a water quality structure, filter the water before it gets to the root.
Yeah, because there can be.
You for twenty-five years, you will build.
We'll have something, you could do a, a vegetated like swale, I mean, options not to have.
Well, anytime you.
Water, right, yeah.
You don't have that.
Time you build and move dirt, you pretty much have to put a sediment pond in, but it doesn't have to be permanent.
To be permanent, it's just during construction and then.
And then it, then you give vegetation up.
What's during construction and what's after.
Yeah, different things.
But you can have drainage swales and vegetated swales that don't, I understand what you're saying too, obviously with children and stuff, a pond might not be a liability you want to take on, you know, with that, but, um, there's ways to deal with it too.
You put in a.
You could put in a pretty fountain and, right, exactly.
You could put in some traps or something like that, generally they got to stay in place for twelve months after the vegetation.
Yeah.
But what they could design.
See them, move them out and see them.
Yeah, it's like a basin that doesn't stay wet so that it doesn't actually, you know, it just retains it, not retains it. So that's probably what they would go with, or that's what I would try to do if you're having families and, you know, you wouldn't want children thinking they can swim in them, so. Um, but yeah, I, I think that as a planning commission, um, it's not, like, that's all going to have to go up the chain to DEQ and everything. So it's not really our, you know, duty to.
It's a concern, but it.
Is they'll have to get it done. And, and there are rules about buffers along the streams and everything, and I mean, I, I would assume, and I mean, I know the conceptual model show trees around it. Um, I would assume that you have some sort of idea of some buffer that you would need. Right. Because even if I'm living in the apartments, I wouldn't want to look out at bare dirt either, right? So I mean, you would want to sort of keep it looking like a, a natural space.
Well, I'm not too concerned about the, about the runoff, those DEQ, there's no runoff there, no matter how they, how they have to control it. I, but based on not having clear access to the property at the current time, and still this, this little pedestrian traffic is still a little bit of an issue. I'm trying to weigh it in my mind, I, probably not a bad idea to postpone it for thirty days. Give them opportunity to get some answers or get some stuff squared away. So I'll make a motion to be able to for thirty days.
All right. Second motion, I'll get a second?
I'll second the, the motion. I think the, the motion that that gives further time for, for further examination of some of the issues that people have brought up. And, uh, and, and, um, one of the things that, uh, it, it, uh, may not know this now, but one of the things is, uh, how, how many, how much trees can actually be left on this property with this much, this much dirt being moved? I mean, the area may need to be cleared to be able to, uh, to do that. But that would be, uh, that would be a benefit, uh, not only people living in the property, but and to the environment, but also to adjacent properties. And so, um, as much as possible, that would certainly be a good, a good thing to leave, uh, whatever trees can be left.
And my motion to say table it until next month's meeting, I'm not going to say stick thirty days on it, just till next month's meeting.
All right. Not sure when. All right, you've heard the motion that was amended, I guess, till the next meeting. Not so much thirty days, and it's been second, any more discussion? Maybe in town between now and then, someone's got to out there and walk the land.
I've walked it.
He did, with his motorized, I don't know what you call that thing.
You're supposed to walk, you're not supposed to motorize.
Motorized, you know.
Any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to table it till the next meeting, making known by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries, so hear about it again and remember the next meeting is, twenty-eighth or something like that. I don't have any other comments that I know of. The annual report is in the back. What we accomplished last year or discussed last year. When they take a look at that and, uh, real estate closure form, when does that need to be in? Sooner than better, last week?
February one, today, uh, we need to have it filed, so we could get it signed and leave it.
All right.
Soon as possible, tonight.
Glad to get that certainly back by next week. Appreciate everybody speaking.
Forms to me.
All right.
Got one question.
All right, David?
Hey, Roy, when we had that meeting about apartments and, what was that, what was that? What were we, were we on the zoning board? We met with Holly, we kicked around ideas and stuff.
Yeah, I think that's, this is.
Did we ever get a outcome of that?
I don't, I don't remember, I don't remember getting anything back from that.
I don't think we did, I think that was more townhouses, not so much apartments.
Well, it was, no, it was.
A little bit of everything.
It was that size of building, multifamily dwelling.
Multifamily dwelling.
Like site development regulation or specifically where else?
Well, we're kind of deciding, you know, what type of roofs, type of fronts, uh, what size, where. I think she'd had some people come in talking about, uh, condominiums, about, you know, pre, pre-condominiums together. And that's trying to come up with some rules or regulations that we've been thinking about.
Right, understood.
But I don't think anybody has ever went further than that, she'd had some comments about it.
Do you, you mind looking for that?
Of course.
That we can find out?
Definitely.
We had some good conversations at that.
Oh, yeah.
Density, did it ever come up, how many people per acre?
Uh, I don't know if that was recorded.
I don't know.
You have to ask Holly.
Sure, I was just wondering how they, what you use.
What?
Formula do you use?
What?
Like density per acre.
They got to know. When you build a townhouse.
Oh.
Instead of farms. I thought that there were even some kind of population thing, density per acre that you would have to, you couldn't go over, you know?
There's, there is.
I don't know, I mean, you can't, you might, you can't go up so high, cause a fire truck.
Yeah.
Start digging basement and stuff like that if you're not careful, you know?
And really, if the land laying right, you could have one floor down here and one floor up ground level. Wouldn't have your windows in the back.
Right, right.
It's got to be something there for density per.
I'm sure DEQ has something or health, the health.
I would thought that the health is accounting two or water or something. I don't know, I was just.
Twenty-four was a lot.
I thought, I don't know how to, they had talked to Holly about, from that meeting that y'all were talking about.
I don't think we had any limit there, but I think we were trying to make a smaller thing, thought they would fit better on smaller like tracts of land.
I think there's a density on buildings.
I just wondered how to.
I remember.
Four.
That was. Put there or what? Minimum unit, I mean, the maximum unit density in the R2 and R, in every district. You know, there's a maximum density per acre, but in terms of the impact on the system, the utility system, Daryl, in the engineer, Daryl would have to get a third party engineer to do a quote of gallons per day and the impact it would be on the utility system. Daryl believes that we have the capacity for this to accommodate, but he's, he would have a third party engineer that would provide that. So I'm not sure if you're talking about.
Only four.
So if you're talking more about the utility, the impact or the, just the density of.
Density of the filter.
Now, they come up with this for. No, the twenty-four is, it's a, they came up with it, but they're at that, they're, they're at their, they're. They can't do too much.
Now, we will meet Monday at one, the CIP will meet Monday at one here.
Monday, one o'clock, January thirtieth. Okay.
It's a, it's a maximum of eight units per acre for a story building and a max ten units per acre for two story buildings.
So that twenty-four, this is a three point four.
It fit right in there.
It's fit right in that.
All right, well, we will see those on the committee Monday, and if you'd like to sit in on it, you're welcome.
Which committee is that?
CIP.
That's Monday.
That's Monday here, and, uh, you hear some. Big ears a little shocked, y'all, we'll say that.
All right, are we, are we, oh, wait, are we still meeting?
Being adjourned.
Okay.